Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome. One and a half more days left right after this afternoon. Very excited to have everyone here today. We have a very packed schedule. Our work session is gonna kick off with Mr. Richter giving us some information on the school start times and some follow-up conversation on the educational planning. Then we'll go into our closed session at 5:30 and we will move into our 7 o'clock formal session. So, without further ado, Dr. Boo.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. This is our continued conversation from the last presentation to the board on educational planning. Today, as the chair has indicated, the focus on information around the school start times as well as the educational planning update since the last steering committee meeting. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Richter and Dr. Bailey and Mr. Foody will also be supporting the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Boo and Dr. Gabriel, members of the board. First of all, very happy holiday to you all. We are, you know, as you get to the end of the year, there's a lot to do, so I want to get into this presentation and show you what, you know, what we've talked about. We have had a steering committee since we've met you last and they, they supported a couple of the recommendations that were going to come with you tonight. But they also know there's a lot of work to get to those recommendations, and so I want to kind of take you through all those. We're gonna be talking about school start times tonight and the benefits and challenges and pretty much the high level of those things. I've given you a white paper on that and you could read actually for about a year on research on this stuff is what I found out, is that I got so deep into it, I couldn't get out of it, to be honest with you. Some of the financial considerations that we talk about with school start times because I think those are some challenges in there. You know, scenarios that we should be talking about and then timeline for implementation and then on the Lake Taylor. My goal tonight is to just get guidance from the board on step forward, on the recommendation of the process. That's my goal tonight, if that's okay.
I think that's great. And let's go ahead and hold our questions until the end of the presentation and that way we can get through the entire presentation. A lot of the information included in the white paper is information that many of us know. And so I would just say that we do want to make sure that we leave plenty of time for discussion, so if we're running over and I don't feel like we have enough time, then I'll give us a timeout so that we can get to questions, but that would be my ask.
Okay, thank you. We can go to the next one, we'll just get started. Okay, so the recommendation, now this is also supported by the steering committee, as we had discussions with the steering committee the other night. For those of you present, I thought a very productive discussion. Our meetings tend to go late with them when we get engaged and they were engaged. So the recommendation is that the Norfolk Board of Education will conduct a study and community engagement process that explores the change of school start times for elementary and high schools. Notice I noted in here just elementary and high schools because any option or scenario that we've started to develop doesn't change middle school start time in this, so it'd be a left-alone start time. But in that, we wanted to go through some of the benefits and challenges of, you know, of later start time. And this will focus mostly on the later start time for high school. You know, we start when we're talking about start time for high school. A lot of the research is around health and wellness. There are certainly academic and we're gonna talk about that, but the health and wellness seems to be the focus effort. When the, as you see in the white paper, the American Academy of Pediatrics has done a lot of research on this and they have consulted a lot of different agencies on, on what this means to a student to be well-rested. You know, the, not that, you know, everybody says, "Well, the demands of the kid today." Well, we've all dealt with the demands of a kid when you were the kid and it's ever-evolving. And so, but one of the things that we are really focused on today is the pressure on the student to, to perform, whether it's for, you know, college career, military, you know, just labor force, just knowing that they have to be prepared coming to high school is not getting any easier. The competition's tough and the pressure on them to perform is very difficult. But, you know, one of the things that leads to, that leads to the challenges that high school students have is their lack of sleep. And even in delays as you go through this, that all of the, all of the outcomes that we see lead to some positive benefits. I had a tough time on the health and wellness finding any negative or challenge to a late start time. You know, frankly, that with that, even when school starts later, the studies show that high school students don't necessarily go to bed any earlier. They probably keep about the same time. It's a matter of when they get up, not when they go to bed. It's hard to change that schedule at night. And so all the studies seem to get focused around there. But it also goes to their behaviors. Inadequate sleep leads to higher levels of self-reported depression. You see that caffeinated drink consumption is higher. You see use of tobacco products is higher. And just keep going down the list as, as a student has more of those on them. But when they get longer sleep times, those seem to decline for some reason. And there is a direct association, according to the American Academy of Pediatrics, that that matters. I thought it interesting that, and I think this goes directly to, one of the things that we talked about in transportation is that the amount of crashes, car crashes, when school starts later for high school declines across the board. Two cities in Virginia, this Kentucky study seems to be the most extensive, but it is directly relatable to your schedule. And I say that because, you know, Mr. Kleinbell and I talk about that start time when the military traffic is going up in the north part of the city and how buses have to go back and forth and just how busy the roads are when our kids are going to school. And so it directly relates to that. And so, you know, getting kids on the road if they're gonna be driving to school at a more optimal time is maybe a little later in that rush hour at the end of that. So I think that is a direct relation to you. And so I think those were a couple of those benefits that we saw when it came to health and well-being. Now, on the educational performance, you know, I think there was, in fairness, there were plenty of studies out there that said they weren't sure if the evidence was conclusive about academic performance. So to be fair, there are studies out there that don't show, but there are, there are more studies out there that show that there is an increased rate of graduation rates, attendance rates, lack of tardiness, that diminishes. We also see that standardized test scores start to increase in longitudinal studies that are out there. And so when you see that, but also one of the interesting facts that I found was that the later the time, the better. So the time seems to be, for some reason, the number that kept coming up was 8:30. For some reason, when it gets to 8:30 and later, that's when it seems to make a bigger difference. And again, I think it's a matter of a bunch of combination of things that, you know, between, and sometimes it just depends on the district you're in. In this case, where transportation matters, when we have known that we get high school kids on a bus at 5:55, 6 o'clock in the morning, those, you know, that's when we're talking about that later school start time. So, because I think that especially in, in condensed urban areas, that is a very common occurrence. I think you guys aren't alone in picking up kids before 6:00 AM. Because of the offer of choice around the country in the large urban districts that they're transporting across the city, there's a long ride times out there. And so, so I think that those were some real, some real evidence that we saw. And again, these aren't small studies. Thirty thousand, thousand students across eight districts in seven states isn't an isolated study. Those are longitudinal, they're in-depth, they make a difference when it comes to school start time. On top of that, we're seeing that, again, you know that your neighbor next door is exploring and has voted to at least try to go after the 2021 school year for a late school start time for high school. Since I have left you, I have purposely, and I've just happened to be with about five extra, five districts since I've left you last, and every single one of them, to a district, is exploring later start time for high schools. And it's just, and it's not a coincidence and, and it wasn't something that I brought up. And three of them, they said they were exploring. I said, "By the way, we're talking about this with Norfolk and, and Virginia Beach is doing it, Chesapeake's been there." So I think that this isn't, this isn't a fad or a trend. I think this is the reality of where, where we're going when it comes to that. Go ahead to the next one. So again, I think the next one just shows that, that 8:30 or later. Now, the transportation benefits is that we saw is that, you know, we have talked about this before, you got a briefing, some of you got a briefing in the spring, we updated this in the summer when we talked to you about the transportation, the full utilization of fleet drivers and lesser driver downtime. We know that in a four-stagger system, that if we went to a three-stagger system because of a late high school start time, we could go to three staggers in this. And so with that comes a lot of benefits, including we would get full utilization of fleet and drivers. One of the things that Mr. Kleinbell deals with on a daily basis is that he's got drivers that cannot meet the next stagger they're in. And so they're having to wait for the next or the next stagger and be in downtime. Now, that's not necessarily extra dollars spent, but it's dollars that aren't being utilized to their fullest potential, which means we have to cover those drivers with other drivers. And when he gets absenteeism in driving, that's when he has to fill those gaps. And so on top of that, we would have shortened, shortened bus ride times. Because of the staggers and how they work, the longest bus rides are the last stagger. And in that, we're able then to reduce that because almost all, and I might even venture to say all, and I'm looking at Mr. Kleinbell just for a nod, all elementary routes are under a half hour. And so we're not talking, so we're talking about lesser bus rides unless they are in a K-8 school. And so in that case, when you're gonna see one of the challenges of this is that, that early start time for elementary kids and worried about darkness and those things, understand, we have elementary kids getting on the bus before 7 o'clock right now. And so, so there are already students that do that because of the K-8 schools out there and having to get them to school on time. So, which then leads to the idea, should we adjust even later start time in the middle school to bump that back some too? As many of you may know, Virginia Beach is exploring a couple scenarios and one of the scenarios is just pushing all school start time back, which I thought was an interesting scenario for them. Just let's push everybody back. That way you're avoiding the darkness in the morning, you're avoiding the rush hour in the morning and you get, you know, you get in front of the rush hour at night. I think they're exploring it for that very reason, because I think they found that as a challenge. But what we mean by being able to reduce this ride time is that because you have availability of buses, those long ride times, those 83, 85 minute bus times, we can actually split those because we would have enough fleet and drivers who aren't sitting but are able to get to those, which means that we may not be able to reduce the fleet as much, but we can definitely reduce ride time. And so, but in this, we can also look at the reduction of approximately, we have estimated about 40 contracts. Now, the fact of the matter is, is you don't fill those contracts all the way anyway. There's about 145 or 245 contracts out there and I, that's an estimate, it can vary a couple back and forth. But as I've, as I stated before, Mr. Kleinbell's never been able to fulfill every contract position in that. It's just, it's too complicated a position to fill all of them, but we can actually just get those out of the budget line item, so we know that those dollars can be allocated other places. Then later AM picked up, the later AM picked up, pick-up times make a difference. So all of these things, the accreditation benefit, I think in the, in the Commonwealth with the, with accreditation being linked to average daily membership and attendance, we've seen reduction in absenteeism and tardiness. Almost every study has evidence of that because of late start school time, later start of school time. So it leads to better accreditation record and just another factor that we can use. Some of the, we're trying to get that changed up there, some of the challenges and then that I think that we're gonna have to, that we really have to make sure is, of is, Sherman, do you mind? Okay. No, back one more, sorry. Is talking about those early start, those start times for elementary school. Concern of early morning darkness and safety, that's always going to be there and we know that. We also know that we've been, we've been doing some research on dusk and dawn and trying to figure out when dark really happens. And if, being this far on the East Coast, you understand that at 7 o'clock in the morning, it is dusk here for the last week before Christmas. And then you get back and you're starting, we're after the winter solstice, we're starting to get long again. We're really dealing with a darkness issue for a matter of two or three school weeks. And that is it, as far as dark concern. And that's dark, dark concern. Okay? So again, everybody adjusts to this a little bit, but even, but if we can bump back any time to get it beyond that, I think that takes one other safety issue out of the way. I thought an interesting, interesting conversation that, and there's no research on this, but that I have, but because elementary school kids typically aren't in, engaged in as many or have the offerings of many after-school activities that go late, their typical bedtimes can be earlier. And if, if my children have been any evidence, my elementary kids were up early until they were about sixth graders. Now my kids sleep until noon if they want to, because that, they're high schoolers, that's what they do. But I think that, that children, the younger children have a tendency to be that early riser anyway. And I think part of it is that at the home, the bedtime is more controllable at the elementary grade level. So if we got an earlier start time, that is a, something out of our control about when parents can put to bed to make sure they get the appropriate hours. At high school, sometimes they don't control that because there's so many after-school activities that they could be responsible for, or they're having to travel long distances for athletic events, band events, or club events. And so sometimes that's just out of their control. Before and after care. You know, I think one of the things that we hear everywhere when we discuss this is older siblings being home for younger children after school. This instance does occur and there's no question, but I'm going to contend that this isn't a widespread instance. You know, half of your students aren't being taken care of by older siblings because you simply don't have that dynamic. But that we are going to have concerns and questions from parents about this and there's no question. Now, here's the other thing is that typically after-school daycare is offered at the elementary school in much more frequency than in high school and junior high. And so it becomes an operational behavior of how to deliver after-school daycare, whether it's through partnerships with YMCA, Boys and Girls Clubs, or other, other agencies in the city, or how your schools offer them for that after-school daycare. On the other side of that, that when you're talking about after-school at high school, if that gap is too long between end of school time and athletic start time, then we have a gap that's hard to fill for our students. So if high school ends at 2:30 and their athletic events are 4:30, what's going on in that two hours in between? After-school daycare? No. They're having to find something to do. Hopefully it's a tutoring, however, it's a, maybe the coach is sponsoring something and, and you know, I see that happen. I know that's happening with some of your coaches out there. They're, they're doing tutoring and study, what we might call study tables after, I call them study tables, after school. But they're doing those kind of things, but those are harder gaps to fill than elementary. And so what we would do in the high school start time is actually decrease that gap between after-school and event time, which is very helpful. So, but that's a challenge here because it's always been a challenge. Obviously lighting on existing fields is going to be another issue and we've talked about this extensively. We have done the research on what it's going to cost to replace or put lights on the fields that don't currently exist. You know, it's estimated to be somewhere between 300,000 and 500,000 of capital expense to do it, but once again, this year, you guys were in a pretty special situation where you had two football teams get to the state championship. It was pretty awesome. You're dealing with darkness then. Hopefully that happens every year, but, but we're dealing with darkness once again for about three weeks. It's not a permanent issue of lighting when the cost is much less to bring in rental lights and those companies that install those, offer those also, where we're, we're just doing transportable lights in and out when needed. And so, and there's some schools out there that are already going to another field that has lighting anyway, and I think that's what they did this year. So, and then transportation is always gonna be a challenge again when we're talking about, but you're dealing with that in a bigger issue now about activities, buses, and not being able to get buses back on time to get to the athletic events anyway. So you're dealing with some of that also. So the recommendation that comes out of the steering committee would be that the changes of school start time should be explored. To prepare a community survey, develop an effective communication plan, that survey must reach parents, school staff, and students specifically. Now, if there's other groups, that'd be great, that we need to talk to. But here's the thing, is that when you're doing a survey like that, without going out and talking to people, our experience is that without preparing a good fact sheet and a concise fact sheet, that people will not look at fact, they're gonna go on emotion and just their experience. And it needs to be a broader discussion than that, because here's what's gonna happen. We're gonna go out to the community meetings and it's already happened, we're gonna have parents that come up to me and they're gonna talk about their specific situation. And you know what? They're right. I can't argue that situation. But there is no way a school district of 30,000 can accommodate every parent's schedule. And so what we have to do is we look at the benefits of the whole, that, but accommodate students where most appropriate. That's how we deliver a lot of the services that we do, because that's how we, because we wanna reach every child in this. But we have to pay attention to when the parent says, "Look, I've got a high schools and I got elementary kids and they have to come with me to a game." I get that. But we also know the overall benefits. So I think that preparing a good fact sheet or even a, a presentation that has a voiceover that explains, explains the benefits and challenges that we're facing. But that survey, the steering committee does not believe that, that survey should be a "Do you want it or not?" They believe it should be focused around the concerns on topic area and how we best address the concerns with topic areas. I didn't have one steering committee, we had, we didn't have a lot, but the other night I had one that said we shouldn't do this. And whatever that means to you. But there are gonna be parents, again, that are not going to be for this, we know that. But we have to conduct community meetings because in a good, effective communications plan, you have to go out and talk to people. And when we find that, our surveys tend to be more objective when there's a presence there of presentation and the ability to ask a question. And so making sure that we select sites and times that are of optimal participation's gonna be important. And then to present a timeline for implementation, I put on there whatever it is. That is not up to, that is not up to me, it's up to you, but it's up to the process also about how we can get through a process. So that's that, for that, on school start time. The next part was the Lake Taylor K conversion that we spoke to extensively at the last work session. The Norfolk School Board considered the consolidation of Poplar Halls and Fairlawn into current Lake Taylor Middle School and convert the kindergarten through eighth-grade facility. Also, we discussed extensively about the impact of Campustella on this whole process and we also are, and the, and the steering committee is recommending that we look at a mandate of 30% of capacity of Southside STEM and 70% for available students in the boundary. Now, I will tell you that the committee has no clue about who we select of the 30% that live in that neighborhood that don't go. Now, I'm gonna tell you right now that, I'm gonna show you some numbers, that it may not matter, but it will matter in time. But as a result of consolidation, again, Fairlawn will be used as a pre-kindergarten center and discontinued use of Easton. Now, in this recommendation, I should, and we should've put in here, in that, but it's in this one, this means that we're going to start that feeder pattern consideration we presented in the master plan in June and July, because Ingleside now will be moved into the Norview feeder pattern as a result of this move. So the recommendation is for the, is to move forward and to say that next year that we implement this program. Now, there is a caveat here that I think we missed and I, and we should've stated it last time, but as you go back and look at this, to make this Lake Taylor K-8 work for next year, the school start time has to be considered, whether it be a macro decision or a school-specific recommendation for this building. Mr. Kleinbell's informed us that this could be anywhere from a 10 to 14 bus impact if we leave current school start times as they are. So that is an important consideration here. Now, it doesn't mean that we have to make the macro decision on the district, we may just make it for that building and make a start time to accommodate easier transportation. What that solution is, we'd have to sit down with, with Mr. Kleinbell and his staff to figure out what's the best way to do that without overtaxing transportation. So the reassignment would occur next year. Now, what we have also discussed in the recommendation from the steering committee is that they think it imperative that we sit down with the school staff, whether it be as separate buildings or together as one staff, and talk about what are their, what are their concerns, what are their excitements, what are, what do we need to address to make this happen? We agree. We think it not only has to be a facilities discussion because frankly, it's, facilities is one part of it. It more has to be about, they gonna have jobs, you know, what's, you know, what's the curriculum, what's our goals of a K-8? All of those. So, so what we're looking at is Dennis and I looked at a few dates for, for middle to late January to go in and meet with the staff and to communicate with the principals before we leave to see if those dates could be available to meet with, with the staffs of those schools. So we go through and again, you've seen all this stuff where we have the capacity to do it. Next year will be a little tight because of those big seventh and eighth graders, but again, it depends on how many students get chosen into or decide to go to choice schools out there. But we also know that the estimated enrollment is anticipated to decline. Those lower grades right now are smaller and they're gonna push through. And so we know that we're gonna have, there's more than enough room in the K-8 building to accommodate a K-8 population here. The condition of the buildings, as we know, well, there's not a building that doesn't need invested in, so we just know the numbers on this. So the anticipation is that in what we have, and you could go probably the next one if you don't mind, Sherman, is that, that we make some renovations of this building, both programmatic and some condition improvements of this building, to accommodate the program that will be in the building, but also to kind of freshen it up. I know there's some, there's already work that's been scheduled on it, looking at some of the CIP requirements of this build, that have been recommended for this building, but there has to be space accommodation. And I think one of the biggest concerns we heard on our walkthrough and our, and our evaluation was that we need a little more space for music. Other than that, if we can make some of the changes in this building programmatically, we haven't heard anything else that would really stand in the way. We do have to address the number of music units that we teach in this, in a K-8 between Fairlawn and Poplar Halls and then Lake Taylor. And, but I don't think that is something that, that shouldn't, that can't be accommodated in the space that we have. Transportation, you know, Lake Taylor is not a school that kids walk to and they don't do, walk to it now. And so we've done some, we've done some analysis to see where current kids are and where they are in ride time and, you know, what's the best, what's the best mode to get there. And so this is something that we're looking at and we don't have, of course, we don't know where kids live next year. We know where most of them live, but we don't know where they live next year, so we'll have to do analysis based on this, so we're, so we can pinpoint better how much time it'll take to get to the building, if we're going to, if the kids will like meet at the elementary school and then be transported or will, how, where will our pickup locations be? School safety zones will be considered, walking zones will be considered, of course, everything that Mr. Kleinbell and his staff do to keep children safe when they pick them up will all be considered in this. But the, the fact is, is that most of the children here would get on a bus to go. So this was in addressing the Southside STEM at Campustella and the amount of seats that could be available. And, you know, we, we did do some projecting out and we know what the design capacity of each building is. Now, the design and the use of building do make a difference, but, and how they use buildings and how much, how many kids you put in a space and all of that, but these were the design capacities as scheduled for this building. Now, at the, at grades, basically kindergarten through fourth, or through third grade, about 114 seats per grade and from fourth on, we go to 120, 120, and then it went down to 100, 100, 100. Now, this is all great if kids came in perfect packages of 20 and 22 and 25 and they just don't. So these are estimated seats that can be available based on the 2018, well, you saw last year, and then this year's enrollment, and then the available seats by year. And you can see the estimated in 2019, and this is a projection of attendance, is that if you go across the board, there are seats available to the extent where you could meet that goal, if the goal was 30%. Now, the issue that we have at hand is that we've been informed that there is going to be construction of affordable housing south of the river again, but this is anticipated to take impact for another couple of years. So this, at this point, is an operational behavior. This isn't a facilities thing. You've got according to attendance and to design capacity seats, there are seats available to offer choice. Now, if we go back and we think about what are the entry points, I think some of the early discussions were kindergarten, third grade, sixth grade. You know, right now, we would look at that middle school being a little tight, but with that projected enrollment to go down a little bit, we still have room at the middle school. Now, entry points, again, are more of a, an operation Now, entry points, again, are more of a, an operational and policy decision about how you want to enter kids into a program.
And programmatic.
And programmatic.
Because of the special nature of this one, yeah.
Absolutely. It is difficult to enter a kid into the middle school if the program has been warranted to found, be founded in elementary. And so, but then the discussion has to happen, is that if this choice were to take effect immediately and was effective, then how many seats and when those, when those kids come in because of the housing, how are we going to either draw boundaries or draw feeders or draw choice of the students who we won't have room for in the backyard? And that's, again, we deal with that in choice all the time. So we'd have to look through boundary scenarios and defeator scenarios and all of those things that would help us accommodate the programmatic goals and the diversity goals of that school. So those are the numbers for you that we were asked for. So an additional options to consider that we, we looked at. You know, we can just close the Lake Taylor facility and move 68 to Roughner. Roughner's been a chronically underutilized school. I don't think it's a good option, but it's an option. And you could do the other way. You could close a Roughner and put them over at Lake Taylor. I don't think it's a good option, but it's an option. You know, Lake Taylor is an elementary school with students from Ingleside, Poplar Halls and Fairlawn, and then that means the 68 would attend Roughner. You know, I, I think that that takes away from the continuity of a lot of different things in the Lake Taylor area. But there's not, I mean, when you've got that much capacity in two adjacent boundary middle schools, you're just, you're dealt with what you're dealt with. And so I don't believe the option is to hold on to a building like, like Poplar Halls. I don't believe that's an option. I believe at some point that building will close itself. As I passed it today and I saw those six portables in the back, now all the playground space is being taken, now it's, I mean, it's not a facility to be used in the future. It is a great school. It is great teachers and great principal and great students. It's just a bad building. And I think we've all come to, to agree with that. Fairlawn is not, Fairlawn's got great bones and the reason, even though the condition is there, it's more of a systems thing. And so that's why we're still recommended to keep the Fairlawn building online. So then the problem then would become the domino effect of what else to do. We can go to the next one. So the last thing that we were asked to talk about is the feeder pattern because we're going to start to impact the feeder. This was something that we provided to the board last summer that talked about, you know, where students are going and how many different high schools they attend out of their elementary feeder. And we pointed out, you know, we pointed out schools that were attending, you know, three and four high schools out of their elementary feeder. And we felt like it wasn't true to what our goals were, which was trying to provide both a great, strong, diverse choice program along with strong, diverse elementary schools, but also pathways that were very clear. And so when a student walks into an elementary school and they know that a third of their class is going way and way, a third of the class is going the other way, a third of the class is going the other way, it's really hard to build community and that kind of family in that. And there's, you know, there's social and academic impacts of that, we know. But, and we're not suggesting that the cleanest, that the, the direct clean feeder pattern is always the right answer, but with the choice that you have offered in Norfolk, a direct feeder can work. And it offers multiple pathways for students to not only attend their school in their community, but if they want to leave and go to a school of their choice, they can. But right now, the pathways can be confusing. So, we'll go to the next one on this one. So what we presented was how it could work. And what's fascinating about all of this is that we can make this work with the exception of two schools. And, and the reason for that is just because of the location, but with Camp Allen Sewell's point, I think that, you know, we just, we would deal with an issue of enough capacity at the middle school level into the high school. Now, this isn't to suggest that we shouldn't adjust some boundary lines in time, too. There are some of these that should and are going to require some boundary changes that occur. I've always said that there's a difference between a feeder change and a boundary change, that you can change a high school boundary by just changing the feeder schools. You never have to change an elementary or middle, but if you change a feeder, then the boundary of the high school changes. And that's, that's the difference between the two. But if, and I think we're going to in time, we're going to have to look at adjustments at these elementary schools. And we're going to have to adjust those boundaries for capacity reasons, for balance, for program, for a lot of these things. I mean, the South Side STEM is already going to require one of those. And so as we look, as we look forward, we want to make sure that we're not overtaxing a middle school or a high school because of a bad feeder change at the, at the bottom. And so we have to, we have to look kind of both ways at this. But what this presents then in front of us is, we can go to the next one, is that we can get every school to a one-to-one elementary to high school. So you want, when you walk into an elementary school, you can get, you know the one high school that you're going to attend if you choose to stay in your community school. Now, again, with the exception of Camp Allen Sewell's point, they're going to divert middle school and then go back to their high school. So they don't, they're still a one-to-one to the high school relationship. So that starts, that starts with the first school, which is Ingleside. And so last year, when Dr. Boone asked us to look at, well, how long does it take you to do that or what schools can we do? Well, Ingleside is a natural one with the conversion of the K-8 building. And so then the next steps will be, okay, what are the next ones that we know that we're going to free up middle school capacity and the high school capacity will be there when we get there? And so we know that, you know, with some declining enrollment, Norview's going to kind of settle down just a little bit because it's always been that, I mean, it's been a full school for a while. But we know that's leveling off a little bit up there. And so the Ingleside entry into it should just keep it at that 100% it's been used at. Anyway, the direct feeder is still an initiative that we think for next year, as we start to look at, will be the next year planning initiative that starts with Ingleside. So, one last thing we were asked for is the steering, the community steering committee's roles and responsibilities. Now, now this group has changed over the five or six years that we've started with them. But what they've been asked to do is regularly attend a task force and, or steering committee and community dialogue meetings. The initial was we asked them to participate at least 50% of the time. We know that people are busy. We asked them to participate in discussions and survey in order to provide feedback. I have this all the time from the steering committee members when they're at a community meeting or they have any, do we fill this out? Well, yeah, absolutely. You're a citizen, you're a community member, you fill it out. But what we asked this group to do is to be a part of the education process, is that when we're sitting in community meetings or they're out talking to their, their civic groups or whatever they're meeting with, is for them to be the voice of the school board, to help communicate the initiatives from the facility plan that go out there. And then to provide that input and suggestions that they may have. When we had, the first committee we had was a really, really strong committee, no question. Those of you who were a part of it, there was a group that stayed together and a core group of about 30 that their participation was 100%. We would meet on Saturday mornings because that was a good time to meet and it was consistent. Now, we've, we've gone through some evolutions of this. And I believe that we're not getting the participation we need right now. And I think part of that is that the selection of the committee into this year wasn't what we did before. The last time we selected a committee, it was, we looked at certain, that we looked at groups across the city, that we sent invitations to those organizations to then select somebody in. We didn't direct it. You didn't direct it. And I think that was a critical part of the trust, that why that committee felt they were trusted and listened to because they were selected by themselves. We went to the PTAs, we went to businesses, we went to the government, we went to everybody and said, "You send who you think is best for the process." And we didn't handpick it. And so this group of core people we have, the nine that showed up the other night are the nine we see all the time. They are committed to this process, they're committed to this district. I'm going to tell you, they're critical. I get 10 emails a week that proves it. But they are the people that you want carrying your banner. But we need 20 more of those people so we could get a more diverse representation of this city to be on this group. And so one of the initiatives that we have to take is that we have to start now and say, "Okay, what are the groups that aren't showing up that we need at the table? And let's get invitations to those group and let them select somebody who will be committed to this process, not for the next three months, but for the next year, couple of years." That gets us back to the core of what that committee is about. I think the last thing that we've asked this committee to always do is to stay true to the, to the, to the committee. Don't, don't vet your grievances on social media, don't, don't go out on news TV, don't get on the radio. And I will tell you, once again, this committee is true to that. What they have to say, they say directly to us and they're not afraid to. But I think that's the, that's the true spirit of this committee. I want this committee to be 20 or 30 again, and I want it to be as diverse and strong as it was before. We have to get back there and commit to that. So with that, Dr. Gabriel, I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so Dr. Boone, do you mind walking us through again the timeline? If we, if we do take action on either of these, whether it's the start time, the Lake Taylor K-8 piece, both, when the board needs to take action in order for the division to have planning time for those items to take place?
If we are looking at implementation of either or both of these recommendations for the fall of 2019, then we need to have the board take action by its business meeting in February. That will give us enough time to work with any schedule changes, any other adaptations that we have to make. It also gives our facilities department a chance to begin thinking about what we can accomplish, that, you know, think, some things we can start during the school year, what are the things we need to start as soon as school is over that very next day, lets us plan for summer programming so we wouldn't have that building online for certain program. It gives transportation a chance to develop the various routes and everything so, so that those will be ready on time. What this also allows us to do, as, as Tracy indicated, the idea of having meetings with the faculty, that we, we fully endorse that. We talked about it this week at the leadership team meeting. We, that also allows the board to have at least one public hearing. And there's one pencil in now for January 16 to address either one of those. And I think the chair has shared that date before. And so that's, that's what it will take in order for us to, to be able to pull it off. And if I may, Madam Chair, talk about what doesn't get accomplished if we don't move forward, is that we face some critical fiscal decisions in terms of any needed improvements and repairs and, and deferred maintenance needs perhaps at Poplar Halls that would require us to use those funds in order to keep that school safe and, and well for, for an additional year or whatever time period that the school board would think about. And so that, that really becomes how, where do we put our dollars? Do we put them in the adjustments, the renovations, the, the refreshing that we want to do at Lake Taylor Middle School? Or do we put it into another Band-Aid for a school that's, that's struggling in terms of its condition? So I did want to pair what we need to accomplish and what happens if we don't.
Okay. Questions from the board? Gibson, Ms. Basine?
That's start times. We're doing elementary to what time?
We would, right now, the first scenario that we developed was a 7:30 or 7:35, which means no, but again, most bus rides are 20, 15 or 20 minutes for elementary school. So pickup times would be between 7:00 and 7:15. Again, we've just, that's the first time.
And that's what, all the elementary schools on the same?
On the same block, yes, yeah.
So 7:30 to 7:35.
And again, the, it's, it's more a matter of how far back you want high school to be. I think if we could push high school back to an 8:40 or an 8:45, we can push elementary back to a 7:40 or 7:45 also. It's just a matter of balancing how late you want to get that high school time.
So middle school starts then at what time?
Um, 8:15, yeah.
15? And that's with the high school starting at?
Currently?
Here I have it right there.
No, no, the new time.
Oh, so what we anticipated was an 8:25 to 8:35 start time. It's about, we try to get that, and that one's a little hard because with the four staggers, it's kind of hard to gauge which one it is sort of how quickly you can get to one or the other. But I think the typical time is at 8:00 or right now. And Bob, looking at Bob for that.
This will be three staggers though, right? There won't, we won't have four. So why aren't we starting high school at 9:00?
Again, in my, and, and again, I think you're just pushing back into after-school activity in that realm. That's the only thing. Ms. Campson, I could, I could argue 9 o'clock would be great, to be honest with you.
That would mean the little kids could not, wouldn't have to start until 8:00.
Yeah, I mean, you could, again, I think it's how you want to just balance those two. I think they all work.
So this is predetermined, this is still kind of?
That one's still up in the air. And I think that depends on those start times. Again, Mr. Kleinbell can run some scenarios and that would help us best. Because I think that the key here is that with, with that middle school and K-8 staying in that middle stagger, is that earlier start time for the elementary kids and how much time it would take to get to those.
If I may, to, to the, the other portion of your question, Ms. Campson, is exactly right. The, we can push it later, but we also get into that three-week period that Tracy mentioned when time first changes and what it would mean for the students who would have to walk home in the dark. So the idea of thinking closer to that 8:30 is why 9:00 makes sense. We also have to think about both ends of, you know, to and from school. It also?
Because we have children walking in the dark now, high school, right?
In the morning.
In the morning.
In the morning. And so in, in that traffic. So if we're going to improve it, we maybe have a chance of, of shortening the time that either group would, anyone would be in any potential dusk or dark. The other thing deals with, we certainly compete with Chesapeake schools now, we have games and things, but the later we go into the day, the later then our games can start or we would have to be making lots of early releases and so.
What time do the Chesapeake, I know they've been doing this forever and ever. What, does anyone know what their time?
I'm, I'm going to look at Dr. Birdsong.
For high school, it's about, I would say, 8:45 that they start. Elementary school, let's wait a minute. Middle school is about 8:30 or so, 8:15, 8:20. Elementary is before that.
7:30.
Yeah.
So 7:30, the kids start there, so it's the same start even, even though there seems like their high school's going a little bit later?
Right. But the idea is not to flip. I think 9:00 pushes us into a few other complications. I think that's a little bit.
You guys get the early sun, but you lose it first. That's, that's the issue, yeah.
Okay.
Basine?
Yeah, so I wanted to piggyback on that because I noticed in this presentation, we didn't have the times up there. And so it sounds like there's a little bit of wiggle room.
Sure.
And really needing, it sounds like an hour, right? If I'm hearing correctly, if we were to do later start times for high schoolers at 9:00, we could go as late as 8:00 for elementary or is that not?
Looks like it with the spread here.
Yeah.
It's close, I mean, I think they have to be in that 35 to 40-minute kind of.
Probably, probably at least 45 minutes between.
At least, okay.
And so, and you can overlap some of that because, and right now, the latest kind of scenario that Mr. Kleinbell run was we almost had an equal distribution of buses for all three staggers, which was really nice to have.
Okay.
So, which means you're going to increase that gap just a little bit, like to that 40 or 45-minute time to get an equal balance of buses.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and one more thing with that, if I may, and I'm sorry to interrupt, is that if you have some of those little longer in between, those, those activity buses or those, those course buses that middle school takes to like the sales course.
And Nauticus.
And that Nauticus, you wouldn't be running into those students being late for program. I mean, because you have those gaps, those late times that those kids are missing instructional time disappear.
Right. And, and as we're talking about programming, I know one thing I've been hearing a lot about is, you know, what about the governor's school for the arts kids, you know, the GSA kids?
Chesapeake schools are part of the governor's school, so that's already being.
Right, so that's already being addressed. Okay. And then, so, and I noticed in the presentation, the recommendation is to study whether we Okay, and then, so, and I noticed in the presentation, the recommendation is to study whether we should, I mean, at least that's how it read. So, you know, I just want to reiterate that it's not whether we should, but how to do it.
That's, yeah.
Right, right.
The, the steering committee, it was, I mean, I was halfway through it, and they were like, well, why can't you even think about it? I mean, I think that was kind of there, as they, they saw it, and I think that that was it. Is that, and frankly, as I went through and hours of reading this research, and hours and hours and hours of it, and that's not an exaggeration.
Oh, I know, I've done it too.
I'm having a hard time trying to tell you why you don't do it.
Right.
I think the language really was, how do we explore the options?
Yeah, how do you explore the options?
Right, right.
And when we start it, when we'll start.
And when do you start? I think that's what they're interested in too.
Right, so that's the third part of my question, is that based on the timeline that Dr. Boone just provided, when do you expect to come back to us with some of these options that we're talking about? Or is that for us to hash out today, that if, if it is the direction of the board to try to, you know, aim for a slightly later elementary start time, so that we can get to that optimal, I know we're still not going to get to the optimal, optimal start time for high schoolers, but, you know, past 8:30 mark, or at, at least at that 8:30 mark. When, when are we thinking we would have some of those options?
Well, to Tracy's opening statement, his goal is to get direction from the school board today on where you want us to go and how soon you want us to be there. And so, when I talked about the February timelines, we're prepared to, in terms of that FAQ document that he mentioned, you know, what we would be able to show the various time options, what the staggers would look like on that document, so that when people participate in community meetings or speak at public hearings, they would know then what we're talking about in terms of the particular options and what they're speaking about, and not keep that open. But again, we're, we're seeking direction from the board as to how you want us to proceed.
Okay.
We're ready, though.
Well, I, you know what my thoughts are, it's yesterday to start it, so.
We do, we do. Carlos, and then Ms. Martin?
I guess, I just wanted to quickly go back, because I sense your emphasis on the, the committee, and the, the makeup and members of that committee, so I had a couple of things with that one. So you said there were about 20, 30 members, I guess you had it one time before, now there's nine committed. Is there a kind of a job description for what these individuals do, on, on what we're looking for, for individuals serve? And kind of tying with that one, the length of service? Because I'm, just want to get some clarity around this, and it could probably come from the administration. Is this an ongoing committee? Or is this a task force with a specific item? Or are they looking at all of our educational planning items that may be coming for us? Because I know that we are about to take action at some particular point on Fairlon and, you know, Lake Taylor and, and this early start time. And so those are just kind of my thing around that one, and then of course, the administration, if not so, then looking at who we currently have, that, that the board members can all know, and then what potential organizations are that we'd like to have represented.
So when, when we, when we did the first round, we did outline kind of some of the responsibilities they would have. That first committee, we kind of asked for a one-year commitment to the planning process, because we knew that we were engaged for that in a contract. This has become something beyond that. This is an ongoing process that we know that there should always be a committee, a, a community committee that has, has some input to facilities planning. So to put a parameter on their commitment, I would say that if, if we wanted to do it right, we would give them a definite time, but to say that this can be open as long as you want to be on this committee. Because I think it is a long term, this one never disappears. You become a planning district, and so this group will always appear. And those organizations, so what we need to do is, so we have a list of the people that are supposed to be on there that represent all the organizations. We're just going to go back to that organizational list and say, okay, we're just going to send a letter back to, I'm making this example, but this is real, because the city always has somebody there for us. We would send a mayor, a letter to the mayor, if the city wasn't sending anybody, we'd send a letter to the mayor and say, hey, we need somebody from the city to represent you for the schools. But I'm going to tell you, the city, the city's never gone away, they've always been in our meetings, so. But that's an example of what we would do. And we will give you those organizations that we feel need to be part of this.
Ms. Martin?
So, it's a sign. So you, about the study, so it seems that the research, the academic research is pretty overwhelming in favor of later start times. But I guess I'm really concerned with the financial consequences and also the impact on the school day. You know, how are we, is the next step to redesign our school day? With, you know, lunch schedule and things like, things like that. So I, I'm really concerned with the financial impact, though.
So the, the initial, and I think those were some of the findings that I was finding, is that, that I was reading about, is that they seem to be some financial, but I never saw the identified financial challenges.
I mean, you already did identify $500,000 in lights.
Yeah, for lighting. That seems to be the capital improvements you make to those kind of things. But we already know that in transportation, we've got savings. We can anticipate seven figures of savings by being able to reduce contracts and bus times and, and substitute drivers and efficiency. So we know that savings is there to already offset. As far as capital improvements, what I can ask, what I can answer to, the capital improvements I can see are certainly to accommodate daylighting, whether outdoor, indoor, however that works. And those kind of things on the capital side. On the operational side, I'm going to have to defer to Dr. Boone on those changes of a school day that might impact cost of this.
I have one other thing.
Sure.
As a parent of an elementary school child, I, I really would like to see the elementary school start time earlier as opposed to later. I mean, because it was very difficult to get our children to school and get to work by 9:00.
I did.
I mean, you can't do it.
I was in your same boat.
Yeah, so I think that that should be in consideration, too.
Well, yeah, and we, we consider that, I think that one of the things that we talked about, and the committee also brought up, was, and again, I've shared with you. When I, my daughter's a single dad, I had to wait to go to work because she didn't go to school till 8:30. And my workday starts early, as you know. So it's difficult, because before daycare is far more rare than after-school daycare. Even though you are providing breakfast in those before-school programs, the extensive daycare's not there.
As for the, the school day operations, we, we were required to have a minimum length of school day by state statute, so we wouldn't be beyond that. And, and fortunately, we've been in a very good place in terms of length of our school day in Norfolk, so that wouldn't change. Obviously, things such as the lunchtimes would bump earlier. And so, just because of the, the hours. So let's say an elementary school takes in at 7:30, their first pickup's 7:00, so it's 7:30 till 2:30 or something. So lunch would occur within that window, so we would make those adjustments like we normally would. But the length of the day itself would not be impacted by what's going on. We're looking to have the exact same length of school day, not shorten it or truncate it because of the start time.
Dr. Boone, and may I, because that just sparked me to think of what could be an operational cost. What a later school start time can provide at a high school is the opportunity to offer what we might call zero period, which means a course to start the day early if you are able to, which has an operational impact. But it also increases capacity of your building, because if I add time, I add capacity. It can start in front of remedial time that is offered during the day, instead of, you know, you can offer in the morning, or advanced course that you can't get. So you extend the day, and you can afford that to happen. But there's an expense to that, because obviously stipends or a teacher contract or something. That could be an operational cost, but in my opinion, an academic benefit and a capital savings.
And I would say it's a nominal cost, because currently, for interventions and remediations that occur after school, we're currently compensating folks now. So if some of that flips to the front end for our element, middle and high schools, then that would be the same type of, of dollars. The, the new money would be for zero bell courses that potentially added on. But again, the cost of those are nominal, will be based on, you know, certainly we would expect a certain number of students to be enrolled in those classes and go forward. But it wouldn't be replicating the entire master schedule at the zero bell.
I did have one other thing that came to mind when reading this, was promoting or building a curriculum around personal responsibility. I, I don't have, my kids aren't teenagers yet, but I do have nieces and nephews who are. And, and in this study, it talks a lot about how high school students are staying up later. They have a lot more distractions with their electronic devices and things like that. And I know from my family, they, there's, that's an issue.
Yes.
So I think that, you know, yay later start times, you know, I could just imagine how excited they'll be about that. But, but to still drive home that, you know, regularity in your schedule, because there's also in the research about how they're, they're staying up late and then sleeping all weekend.
Yes.
And so they're, you know, so teaching them healthy habits. Because when they become adults, no one's going to change their start time for them.
That's right.
Because they're tired.
Yeah, no doubt.
And if I may, Ms. Martin, that was exactly the conversation we had in the superintendent student advisory council meeting last week. We were talking about the school start time discussion and, and garnering some early conversations. But I did say to the, to the students who were there, I said, but do remember when it's time to go to college or your job, there, your start time is going to be based on what's needed, and that's not going to be negotiable. So we were kind of having that, that personal responsibility conversation. The other thing I reminded, I said, for those of you who decide for college and everything, there's going to be a course that you're going to have to take and need for graduation, that's going to be an 8 o'clock AM course. And so you got to figure out how you make it happen.
Okay, Mr. Jordan?
Just, I guess, kind of working backwards, sharing some things in response to some of the questions that Mr. Clanton asked. With the steering committee, I guess if you talk about the version 1.0, we were, had a primary focus on the educational planning, as was tied to the board strategic plan and the, some of the specialty programs we're looking at with the transformation initiative at the time. So they, they had a specific purpose. And then with the version 2.0, I think it got expanded, because we recognized we had to tie the facilities to it. And so it, that's, this current version, I think, had more of a focus on facilities. And then when we did the appointments, we were tying it to the, you know, the school board has a policy around advisory committees. And so we were trying to make sure that we were aligned with the advisory committee process, and I think that is part of what changed. So if we, if it's not going to be part of a school board advisory committee, then I think we just have to specify that and not get that piece caught up in it.
That makes sense.
The other thing I thought was a positive from the original steering committee, they elected leaders, co-leaders.
Yes.
And so there was ownership in the committee itself by those who were participating, versus I think what I hear from some committee members, they feel like now they're more hearing and responding versus leading. So I think as we talk about the steering committee, that would be something that would be helpful. On the, maybe I'll go to Easton Preschool. That's in this mix, but I'm still not really clear why. You know, you mentioned it in the presentation, you've talked about the potential of having the K-8 at Lake Taylor with popular halls and Fairlon. But I'm still not really hearing the, the Easton piece of it. Why, why now? And then also, the integration of the students who are currently at Easton Preschool somewhere else?
Well, a, a couple layers in that, and I'll start in Tracy's, and then we'll add, add the work that he's been doing with it. One of the challenges we continue to face is staffing the classrooms with students in our two existing pre-K centers, Berkeley Campus Stella and Willoughby. They're on outer fringes of the city. What we don't, and Easton is in a, in an interesting place, under the, under the interstate now. And so, what, the idea of utilizing Fairlon for an early childhood site allows us to have a more centrally located place, that perhaps we can better fill classrooms that families feel like they can access. It won't, it won't take away, we still have classes that are very filled, very full at both Berkeley and Willoughby. But this would help with the challenge that we have, particularly three-year-olds who parents have to transport, then it's an easier place to get to, in, in terms of the Fairlon piece. We also, you know, there were a couple of iterations, and we had bounced around some other utilization of Fairlon. And listening to what we heard in the community conversation, that those probably aren't as palatable to some of the community. But the, the, the fact that Fairlon is an elementary school and converting issues to an early childhood would make a, a great deal of sense in terms of the infrastructure. So those are some of the things that, that, that brought us to the table around how Easton has gotten to the table.
So I was at Easton yesterday. And I still, just personally, as we move down the path, because as I understand it, we are sticking Easton into the recommendations that's being considered for September? The closure of Easton would be?
They're not directly tied, but that would be the recommendation.
Yeah, so I, I just would, personally, as we go through this process, like to hear more about the integration of Easton and the specialized programming that they have there into this proposed early childhood center.
And if I could?
And whether or not, and whether or not it would be all of those who currently attend Easton moving there, or does the Easton population get distributed around?
I can answer that question. Our goal is to move the entire Easton program, the, all those classrooms into Fairlon. But what it also allows us to do, and we've talked about this at the district leadership team many number of times, it allows us to have some classrooms that have students who do not have disabilities, have not been identified with disabilities. And it allows us an opportunity for greater integration of disabled and non-disabled peers by, by having that mix there.
And are we considering popular halls pre-K in there?
Yes, popular halls pre-K, thank you, Ms. Smith, from the community meeting that night, would also be part of. So the first two classes from popular halls would be at that Easton site, because the Lake Taylor is a K-8, not a pre-K-8, because of space. So we would have that, and then it would allow us to also think about placing other pre-K classrooms in that building.
Can I add just one more piece to that? Because I think, I'm always thinking, well, what about 10 or 15 years down the road? To remain a early childhood center, whether that be elementary school or whatever, means that you have a building there for younger students. A, a pre-K program has some flexibility in where they can go in time. Because it's driven by funding, it's driven by, the thing is, is that communities are driven by demographics. And so you see gentrification in areas that we don't know about today that are going to happen in 10 or 15 years. To keep a viable elementary school open right there is a great flexible option for the future. And so instead of moving a high school program where you have to do significant renovations to change the space types, this is still a building that can be viable for elementary or young education for a really long time. I, I just think it adds that flexibility.
And I, I'd just like to see the, some additional depth to the Easton piece, as we have to the rest of it. And then finally, on the South Side, STEM Academy, the, the, the concept behind the 70-30 is still driven by the foundational principle of deconcentrating hyper-poverty and
Yes.
increasing socioeconomic diversity. So I want to make sure that we don't lose sight of that. That it's not just 70-30, it's 70-30 with purpose.
Okay, okay.
And then with the, if we do find ourselves in a situation where there's any type of, quote, displacement as a result of the 30%, then if there, I think there should be some discussions around those individuals then having priority for other options within the, within the city. And then lastly, as I mentioned before, with that recommendation, what the level of, whether it's resources that comes through the budget process, or just in general, ensuring the instructional programming and supports around a fully in-depth STEM program, you know, that's implemented with fidelity, that, that all of that is definitely, you know, has to be there in order for it to achieve the goals that, that we've established. So I think that's very important, staffing all of that. And I'm all in on this later start times, pending. Pending public feedback.
Okay. I'm going to go and then I'll... Okay. So what I would like to have is some type of a chart, I think Dr. Boone might already have one, outlining what the possibilities are for the early time for elementary school, middle school, and high school. And an outline, as you stated in your next steps piece on the communications piece, developing a few effective communications plans. So I want to know is what meetings and conversations have already occurred, when they've occurred and where they've occurred, what conversations are to come, and how we're going to deliver that information to students? Is that going to be a piece of paper in their book bag? Is that going to be through PTA meetings? Is it going to be through an MPS Now segment that we, you know, blast out? I'm not sure. But I'd like to know what those options are. And is there a goal for us to reach a certain percentage of parents and families before we feel satisfied with the response that we have? I mean, clearly, we do know what the data shows about the start times. It is a matter of being completely transparent with our families to let them know, this is what we are considering. It is in the best interest of kids. We're always going to work in the best interest of kids. But we want to bring you into the conversation to have input into it. If we can align any of those conversations with meetings that are already taking place, like PTA meetings, I would think that that would be ideal. And I would definitely like to see the fact sheet when that becomes available. You know, we say that it's going to happen in February for us to take the vote. That's, I mean, that's two months. So...
Minus two weeks.
Yeah. And, and we have a public hearing. We have a public hearing that is a save the date for January the sixteenth to get that input. So I certainly don't want the community to feel that that's their one and only time to get their voice to the board. But as much work as we can do ahead of that time, I think that's important for us if we're going to be making a very critical decision. When it comes to the Lake Taylor K eight piece, there was some conversation about Easton preschool about the fact that they had some classrooms with special adaptive equipment and whatnot, and what would be needed in order for Fair Lawn to accommodate to that. But I do like the idea of the students being able to have disabled and non-disabled peers, that group, because I think that's very beneficial. And then I'll, I'll save some of my other comments so that everyone else can get back to their points.
Can I respond to the, to the adaptive classrooms and materials and, and needs?
Mm-hmm.
We would certainly be replicating what they need, and in some cases updating some of the equipment and, and pieces that they have. There's also a specialized playground there, and we would certainly be looking into what it would take to have that adaptive playground either, either moved or, or recreated. And so we would be providing all of the services that the students currently have.
Now, Lauren, Tanya, do you have, I'm sorry, did you have a follow-up question?
Yes.
Okay.
First of all, I would like to just say that I totally agree with Rodney. We have a STEM academy. We spent a lot of extra money to equip it to be a STEM school. I think we need to really make a priority that we turn it into a fully functioning, high-achieving school. You know, I mean, that's, to me, that's like, whether we're doing anything else, I'm disappointed at what I see hap, you know, where they are with their academics at the moment. So I would like to make sure that the board keeps their eyes sharply on what's happening at the STEM academy too. And the other thing that I'd wanted to talk about was what you, you were kind of saying, I'm fully in favor of this. I was concerned about the 2019 start because I was concerned that we're not having enough information out to parents and getting enough input. That's why, when you said it needed to be tied, I mean, I, I know we can move ahead on the other because it's been already discussed. I thought we were doing it last year with the Lake Taylor part. But that would be my only concern. If we need to do it together, we need to do it together, I guess. But I know that there are a lot of parents that have different points of view. And a lot of times, it's like Tracy said, the fact sheet with the information. But it's, and it's not just parents, it's teachers also, it's the staffs.
Sure.
Everyone needs to adjust to it. And I, I'm, I'm a little conflicted because I certainly don't want to lose this opportunity because we've known for years that our high school kids need to be coming in later. So I just want us to kind of
Yeah.
keep, to see how, maybe we need to immediately start setting up community meetings for January. Maybe January needs to be community meeting time so parents can have a say.
I mean, that's...
So parents can get the information. And we need to set them up around the city.
Yeah.
I mean, I know, I'm in Ocean View, I'm not seeing any meetings ever come out our way. And, you know, they're like, what about us? So, you know, they're, you know, pick a school in every, in each of the four quadrants that this district has, maybe one of the new schools, so parents get to see those too. But I think we need to be doing those in January if we're moving to make a decision in February.
Aggressive.
Aggressive.
Aggressive is, is what we're saying.
I know, and you've got a head start. I think you've already kind of started getting your, your civic leagues and all, uninformed.
I mean, I, I've been, we've been, we've been talking about it for a while.
See.
You know, over a year.
But we're not in Ocean View.
And I've recently been, we, you know, people ask me constantly, when are we, when's the board going to move on it? So it's been something the board has talked about. It's been something that, you know, several of us have talked about, you know, at civic leagues, other community meetings.
But we're not, see, but we haven't been hearing that on my side of town. Although I can tell you, people are going to be super happy to get rid of the fourth stagger.
Right.
That's too late.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
So, so there'll be some dancing over there.
Yeah.
Especially if you're located at one of the schools that the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel traffic goes by and parents can't even get in. So, I mean, there's good, I just want to, if we could focus on January.
We agree.
Right.
We agree.
But, and that, that's what my comment was to Piggy, you know, I, I second that. I think January, I think we should have a, you know, we have the January sixteenth, but really get out some more community meetings, PTA meetings, you know, they'll, they'll all be gearing back up, getting our advisory councils
Yeah.
on board and knowing what's going on as quickly as we can move on that. Certainly, we've been talking about it, conversations are happening, but, you know, making sure that that input is, and having that survey ready to, ready to go is also going to be important.
And I think as, as we share, we're also, it might have been just with Chair and Vice Chair, but we're looking at a third-party vendor to also support us in the survey. We, we already have a contract with someone, see if we can extend that contract so that it's beyond the survey monkey type that we've done. And so we're K-12 hopefully, and they can help us push it out in a meaningful way and, and get that out. And that's why, you know, at the very beginning of tonight's conversation, we were talking about the, the communications piece, the faculty meetings, we're, we're committed to those and those things that we're already planning for. And I think the public hearing is a, is a great opportunity, but it's not the only opportunity.
Mm-hmm.
Because if you go back in the, early in the presentation, Tracy also talks about community forums, similar to what we've done before at, with Lake Taylor, Granby, and Richard Bowling.
Yeah.
And so the idea, again, is to, to do some of that and as much of that as we can between, so that we can report back to the board and keep you updated on our progress so that perhaps the February work session will be a discussion of what we've heard so far, any adjustments we may be recommending to the proposals, and then still allow you to move into the latter part of February for decision-making. So that's the timeline that, that we're, we're fully engaged in.
Right. And, and the second part, the one thing that we haven't talked about, and I don't know if that's, so do you envision putting out options when having these community meetings? Or is that something that you need us to give you some direction on, you know, roughly?
I think we need to hear from Dr. Boone
Yeah.
what, what the window room is, like, like a 10 or 20-minute window for the elementary, middle, and high school.
Well, they're going to, the community is going to want to know what the times are.
Well, I, I think I heard, what I gleaned and wrote down from the discussion we've been having is that, and, and it goes back to, to your list of items, what are the options of the start time? So certainly, we will work with Tracy, with Bob Kleinbell, to look at what are those options that we would do. So, but recognizing it's probably only going to be about a 10 or 15-minute window
Yeah.
of difference, not necessarily an hour.
We need to have that to the community.
Yeah, this is, and actually, I would have a question on that, too, because, you know, options can mean a lot of things. I'll just quickly reference Virginia Beach because they just are finishing the survey.
Yes.
They had three options that were, like, they switched around middle, high, elementary, and then they did that. I don't suggest we do that. I think on the stagger, the way that the stagger could work because of the, your transportation system, it's unique to you guys.
Right.
That, that's not the option.
Mm-hmm.
The option is variance of time. I like the idea of, if you're an elementary parent, if I have a window of seven twenty-five to seven forty-five, where do you fall on a spectrum? I would rather gauge that than, do you think they should go first or last?
Right.
I mean, I don't think that's the question.
Oh, yeah.
And the other one they had in Virginia Beach was pushing everything back.
Right.
Again, I'm not sure that is. So I appreciate the question being asked because that helps give guidance for us on, what's an option to you? I don't know what that means exactly.
Because, because that's the example that, you know, I know they have those three or four options out there. I know other divisions have been putting out, you know, different options. And some of them are very convol, you know, confusing the way they
They are.
have it
Yep.
set up. So I just want to know, based on what you've presented to us before, you know, we talked, you said yes to the wiggle room. So I want to know how much wiggle room, what are we giving you direction on, you know, tonight?
And I would, and I would focus, a lot of the, I, I believe the focus should be on where we believe concerns will be, will rise. We should ask questions about, okay, athletic start time, or darkness, or after-school care, or those are the topics that we need to be gauging the community's response on. Because in my opinion, if we can get a gauge on what per, what parents are most concerned about in a process like this, that's where we focus our efforts to make it better. To, so if, if they're concerned that, if they're concerned, for instance, I'll, I'll go to like the later start time in high school. If they're concerned that if we start too late, athletics are going to do this. Okay, that tells us then we need to look at high school start time as it relates, if that's a major concern. But what we do is we, we gauge the community on where there, I think sometimes we get a survey out there, and if there's an area that they're not that concerned with, let's not waste ninety percent of our time on ten percent of an issue.
Yeah.
Let's find out where the major concerns are and adjust our, the decision to where those concerns are. And how do we solve those for the community?
Okay.
So could I?
Hold on a second, Ms. Gibson. Ms. Smith?
One of the things I haven't heard discussed with the Lake Taylor Middle School consolidation or merger is what happens, well, anytime there's a merger or consolidation, there are duplicate positions. So where are the cost savings? Or do we expect some administrative staff to be filtered in within the district? I understand with the classrooms, because it's K, K two, then it's three through eight. So there's no duplication there. But you're not going to have five principals
Right.
at Lake Taylor Middle School. You're not going to have five assistants at Lake Taylor Middle. You're not going to have fifty cafeteria staff. So how do we fit all of that into the grand scheme of things?
That's the work, once we get the nod that the, and, and I think we're hearing it, to put this out for vetting, fully with everyone, we will then begin to work on those details. What would the staffing look like? Fortunately, because we have existing K eight schools in that size range, we can look at what the staffing needs are, what, what it needs, you know, the, the elementary music program is different from the middle school program. And so how have we staffed those? The PE, what's the total number? So we will begin to do all of those staffing models from that, a, as a result of that.
And then we'll be able to take a look at that as well.
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Smith, I think there's always a concern, and, and again, it's not just among teachers, but there's administrative assistants, there are social workers
Yes, yes.
that are, am I going to have a job? Well, the fact of the matter is, is that in most cases, well, you can't guarantee an individual has a job because I know about their performance, all that stuff. But what I can guarantee you is that there's always turnover and attrition in a school division, that there's always a position to fill somewhere. And so if they're qualified for the position to be offered, it just made me a reassignment. But I think people get concerned about, with the reduction in force discussion. And I think we can alleviate some of that concern, first of all, in the staffing, because we're running a K two, three, five, six, eight anyway. But on the, on the custodial, the civic, the jobs that are out there, the principals, administrators, I think that's where we go with that.
I agree.
And I appreciate your concern on that.
Library, media specialists, all of that, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Clanton?
So I want to kind of go in reverse of what I was thinking here. So with the survey and the third-party vendor that you mentioned on Dr. Boone, when we were talking about like the lighting, athletics, things like that, is there a possibility, some of the discussion with them is to kind of do like these SMART surveys? So based on their priority at the beginning of what their most concerns are, then we could probably capture additional questions related to those things?
Yes, no, yeah.
You know, at the beginning on that one. The second piece of that, my question was going back to our work session last month and the discussion around our communication plan, particularly around this area and where we are with that. I know that we had made mention, I think maybe in our agenda planning, about the Houston Independent School District, looking at a site like that to kind of put information there, a place where as board members, when we're going out to the community, that we can direct individuals to get additional information, provide comments and so forth. So I just wanted to find out where we are, because I know we're about, the administration and district's about to go on break. And then by the time we get back, it's January second, and so where are we rolling with that?
What we have already done is move the educational planning work to a more prominent place on the website, on the main page currently, so that that's there. We will continue to populate the information and make the other adjustments into the visibility and what it actually looks like. So this presentation, while it's in Board Docs, we will also upload to, to that educational planning site. So those are the types of things that are already underway.
And maybe a potential, based on one of the comments that Ms. Bessine had, was maybe a quick fact sheet on, on some of the things that we can have.
As that's, anything that's developed.
Yeah.
So, so there, there are a couple of places. There's a, there's a, a steering committee site where they delve into some of the details and other things that all may not be public at that point. And, but all of the public documents, we will make readily available. Those that go to the board will be on Board Docs and the website that are public. And then we would do, do the other work. So anything that's developed, we will be populating there for, for that purpose of making sure that everything is clearly visible. So you won't have to go to Board Docs to find it. But that, that flag, that site of educational planning and, and other descriptors for it would allow people.
So is it possible that, just for the sake of getting to the board, that we have a real comprehensive communication plan?
Yes.
I'm hearing about
Yes.
items that were, tools that we're using, but a real kind of plan saying, these are all the things that are involved in that.
Yes.
Okay. When do you think we could probably get that?
After January.
I know we're about to...
I mean, in, into January.
Okay.
We're working on, I mean, as you just stated, Friday is kind of the break time. We, we have pieces of it, but if you want it in a, a well-presented way, we'll have that early January for the board. That'll give us a chance also to talk with Tracy and the other projected meetings and things that we're trying to put there.
Okay.
So I want to make sure that the board is giving you all what you need as far as next steps and direction. It sounds like we are all in agreement that we need to pursue aggressively the communications piece of getting the information out to parents and families and stakeholders about getting their feedback in response to making a move in February for start times. And the options that are going to be presented to those individuals are going to be some small variance of the start for elementary, middle, and high school, but not necessarily three different versions of what we could possibly do. Is that, am I clear on that?
Yeah, I think that's a better way to gauge.
Okay. And does that cover what is needed for the school start times?
I believe so.
Okay. And then as far as the Lake Taylor K eight piece, what further direction do you need from the board for that?
The, the committee recommended that we go meet with staff
Yes.
to talk through their concerns.
I mean, that has, yeah, that...
And then
Yeah.
And after that, that, but I, I believe the committee supports this recommendation.
Okay.
And we would, again, the FAQ sheets for both of those would be part of that entire
Oh, yeah. Definitely.
But anything we put out would be developed to answer the questions that people may have about it all.
Okay. Sounds, oh, Ms. Gibson, I'm sorry.
So are we saying, just to make sure I'm clear, that we are going to have Tracy come back and have like at least four meetings at different locations in the four areas of the city? Like one week, come in one week and hit them boom, boom, boom?
Well, I don't, I'm not going to speak for you. Go ahead, Tracy. Go ahead.
That depends on if you want me to do those. I mean,
Yeah.
again, that's, that I do have a rapport with your community that seems to be there for some reason or another. But I don't think I have to do all, I think, for instance... I think, for instance, like the PTA stuff and all that, I think that we should be having, you know, staff and leadership going in there.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking about that, but I was thinking about the community meetings, one in each quadrant, making sure that it's available for everyone to come to, everyone that wants to and has an opportunity, and for, and that we're going to be scheduling those meetings with the staff also in January?
Yes, the faculty meetings will be in January.
Okay, thank you.
And I think you started some, I think, right, or with the principals?
We made sure that we invited principals to be a part of the steering, last steering committee meeting, so that they could hear some of those discussions at that point.
And probably as a recommendation, I heard that some are already having meetings in the community about this topic, just I guess so that you would know in administration, if we would just communicate that so that we can kind of capture it all that we're having these meetings, that we can add them as touches.
I'm just, as we all do all the time, you know, what the, our, how the community can help us advocate. So that's, it's not that I'm going out and saying, these are the times, or this is that, it's just, is this something that you would like to see happen? You know, you got to help, help me, help you.
Sometimes I just wonder, what are the big things coming up?
It's just, yeah, these are the big things coming up, and it's like that, it's not, but I have another quick question about South Side STEM Academy that I wanted to ask.
Okay.
Also, so based on the chart that you provided, it sounds like for the eighteen-nineteen, that natural, there seems to be almost, that thirty percent may be available at least in some of the younger grades, is that correct, this upcoming year?
That is correct.
Right, and so the applications for, I know for the middle school piece is out now. Is that something that we're trying to?
We'll have, based on the board's direction and as that has occurred, we'll have to figure out the strategy to let folks know what's available there, almost like we did the first year it started. We did an extra push for enrollment, application to South Side STEM.
Okay, because, you know, to piggyback on what Mr. Jordan said about intentionality in how students for those open seats are selected to meet that goal of socioeconomic diversity, I just want to be sure that since those applications will be coming in at the end of January too, that we're thinking about that, yeah.
We're going to have to work a strategy around making that work for South Side STEM.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Tracy, have a wonderful holiday, Happy New Year, and we'll look forward to seeing you in January, many times.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Thank you, board, and happy holidays to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion to enter into closed session?
I'm sorry. Well, I just had a couple of questions about the motion, I don't know if I should do it now or after the motion. Just a couple of questions about two items that are listed here. The item dealing with the hearing, the discussion, yeah, the student hearing, I know that falls within, you know, we've got a policy that deals with that. Are we, what's the, I'm trying to make sure that we are, if we're talking about the process, to me, that would just be something we would do and open.
It's student-specific. It's specific to the student and that situation.
Okay.
It's not about discussing the policy.
Okay. My caution about that one is if we're in the process of appeal hearing, we have to make sure that we don't, because they have a right to appeal to the full board.
Right.
So, just want to make sure we know.
It's a logistical...
And then the last item dealing with the school board scholarship fund.
That has to do with a request from the people who founded that scholarship for the school board to give them the money. There are legal issues involved in that.
Is there anything I need to recuse myself from?
No, no, I don't think, I considered that, but I don't think that it's really not directly involved with the issues anymore.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that we move into executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks.
In order to the members of the school, we're going to a closed session for the purposes of the Subsection, AM Section G point two dash three seven one one, of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for discussion and consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, and motion salaries, discipline, and resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of the local public schools pursuant to subsection one of the above cited code section. The subject of this section of the motion concerns a monthly personnel document, a discussion of a particular employee's complaint regarding a salary determination. A discussion and consideration of disciplinary and any other matters concerning students in local public schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in this classic record pursuant to subsection two of the above cited code section. The subject of this section of the motion concerns a monthly student support service document and discussion of particular student disciplinary hearing resulting, or rather recently canceled because of the parent cannot attend. Consultation of legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to actual probable litigation or other specific legal matters requiring revision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection seven and eight of the above cited code section. The subject of this section of the motion concerns consultation and briefing regarding the matters set out in subsection A and B of the motion above. Discussion of civil litigation related to a school bus accident and discussion of legal issues related to a school board scholarship fund. Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Campson?
Aye.
Mr. Clanton?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.